Good evening. It's now 7:03. We will call the Town of Bennington Annual Floor Meeting to Order. As we always do, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We always try to pick somebody who's contributed a lot to the town. And tonight, as usual, in the front row, to my right, is Judge Justine Scanlon, who I will tell you was a great judge, was a great lawyer, is a great judge, is a great lawyer, and a better person. Judge, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I slipped. I think that's the first time I've called you Justine since you became a judge. Sorry about that. All right. As usual, we will start with the reading of the warning. The warning for the Town of Bennington 2023 Annual Town Meeting reads as follows. The residents of the Town of Bennington qualified by law to vote in town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet in said town on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. or immediately following the southwestern Vermont Regional Technical School District's annual meeting, should that run over, to transact the business specified to be done from the floor. Provisions for the hearing impaired will be in place for this meeting. Following the completion of such business, the meeting will stand adjourned to Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street through the Lincoln Street entrance. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. for the election of officers and voting on all ballot articles specified. However, those on the checklist to vote in the Village of North Bennington shall vote for the election of officers and on all ballot articles at the North Bennington Village Office on Main Street in North Bennington. The Bennington Fire Facility above mentioned is hereby established as the central polling place for those on the checklist to vote in said Bennington. Residents of Bennington and North Bennington may register to vote at the Town Clerk's Office, 205 South Street, Bennington, Vermont. Eligible residents registering on Election Day must do so at the polling place where they will cast their town meeting ballot. We will not read all of the separate articles that are in your booklet for tonight and have been posted at the Town Office, although we will hear from some agencies that are both in the budget and separate from the budget later in the meeting. The first article of business is the Town Report, which you have in front of you. The Town Officers are here. Are there any questions from the public to be addressed to any Town Officers about the information in the Town Report or the audit on the Town Business? And if you have any questions or would like to speak, please indicate by raising your hand, and I'll call you to the microphone forward. Charles, if you'd like to come up and speak into that microphone there, please. And please state your name for the record.
Yes. Charles Kozloski. I live on Catamount Lane in Bennington. Stuart, I guess this is for you. 8.75% for the budget coupled with $5.8 million for the water is a hefty bunch for us to assimilate. Seems to me that our water bills are already very high. And I just wondered, you mentioned here in your remarks, there's an administrative fee of 2%. Is that the actual amount that we're going to be paying for this loan? Should we get it?
Yes. When we borrow money from the state through the drinking water and sewer fund, they charge a 2% fee on top of the principal and interest payments. So that, in fact, they are essentially making a little bit of money on the monies that they loan out to us. So there is, it's a relatively low interest in today's standards, but that is a fee that the state charges us to borrow in their case.
But there's nothing on top of that that we're paying through a bank or whatever. This is through the state?
That's correct. It's administered by the bond bank, but it is still only 2%.
Well, just one other comment about the water. We've raised it in the past, I know, at certain town meetings, but there's a notion of equability, I think, that everything should be spread out evenly. And I would strongly urge you and the board to consider water meters, not only for the fact that everybody pays his or her fair share, but also that in the future, we may have a water problem. And that water that we don't use might be sold and get some more revenue. So it's something to think about.
Can I address that, Charles, if you don't mind?
Yes, sure.
In fact, the board has considered putting meters on all connections to the town system. At the pleasant time, we meter only multi-residential and commercial firms. We do not meter single-family dwellings. And so from an equity perspective, if you live in a single-family dwelling and there's only one or two of you in the house versus someone who has five family members, you may be not being charged equitably for the amount of water you use. It really does depend. But Bennington does have a water supply capable of supplying some 6.1 million gallons of water a day. We're currently using in the range of 2.9 million gallons a day. So I don't see us reaching the crisis that you might see in the Midwest or the Southwest with water supply. But your point is well taken. At some point, I think we all should look to metering all of our customers.
Very good. Thank you. Just one other question. I don't want to take up too much time, but something by omission that I thought you might address. But how much of the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill passed by the President and Congress, has actually reached Bennington? And how are we using it, or can we expect it in the future?
One could argue that the 5.8 million, which we are borrowing from the state, is part of that, monies that came to the state through the federal government. Other than that, though, we have not yet had eligibility standards developed by the state so that we can say to the state, "Look, we have this project, and we need these monies." We don't have that in place yet. And that is really, we're waiting on the state to develop those standards. I think there was a press release this morning by the governor about projects that they are funding through some of these federal dollars. And most of them are state-related paving and bridge projects at the present time. But there still is money left that will hopefully go to the municipalities once those criteria are established. And we don't have that yet.
Thank you. And one last question, if I might, James.
Please.
In the police report, the chief isn't here, but it's very impressive, the first paragraph, the number of criminal arrests, 929. But I would ask you, or if the chief were here, what is the conviction rate of all the arrests that go to court?
That I can't answer, and I don't believe the chief could answer. That really is a question for the state's Attorney's Office. We find in these times, especially following the whole COVID scenario, that most of it is released on recognizance or released with conditions. Convictions take a long time. The court process these days is extremely long. And so when we arrest or charge someone and turn it over to the state's Attorney's Office, it may take several years before that person is actually brought to trial. Whether they're held without bond or with bond is really a decision by the state. It is not our decision. All we can do is make the arrest, and the rest falls to the state of Vermont.
I hear you. But I know in federal law enforcement agencies, cases that go to trial, all felony cases, 98% or better conviction rate is the standard. I don't know whether we're near that or approaching it, but I would suggest to you and the board that that's something to look at in terms of police efficiency.
I can tell you that we are partnering with Homeland Security. We're partnering with ATF. We're partnering with the federal agencies. We're now crossing, we have several officers that are now deputized across state lines under federal rules and regulations to assist with arrests. But once again, I don't have that information, and it's a very good question. I don't know what our conviction rate is.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, James. Do you have a gentleman in the back who'd like to come forward? If you could, Sam Rustino?
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. Is it fair that we can still talk about infrastructure since the topic was brought up?
Could you say that again?
Is it safe to speak about infrastructure since that topic was brought up?
I think there's plenty of infrastructure in our budget, so that part's certainly germane. And then depending on what you say or how you ask, or where you go...
So I'm speaking generally to the board. Is it safe to say that because of our 8.5 increase, which was generally generated between inflation, as we know that, but our infrastructure? And with our infrastructure, that's going to be ongoing next year and the year before, or year after, and the year after that because of water and...
Sam, one question at a time.
Okay, sorry. I'll try to be as germane as possible.
It's just...
I'm using your terminology. I'm speaking with you.
I know. But one question at a time. So the question was, was the increase in the budget driven by inflation and infrastructure? Is that the question? Is there anybody from the board that would like to address that, or any Town Officer that would like to address that?
I can address that, Mr. Moderator. And the answer is yes. It was driven principally by inflation because the cost of materials are driving what costs we can do to repair and work on our infrastructure. And generally, when the general and highway and fire fund budgets, we're talking about infrastructure that is sidewalks and highways. Other infrastructure projects, such as the water system projects, are paid for out of the water and sewer funds. So they are separate from this budget. And even though we are voting on a bond dealing with water, infrastructure improvements, that is required by law at annual town meeting. It is not impacting the budgets that are before you tonight.
Another statement, I find it hard to believe that there's not really funding on our infrastructure. We seem to find grants for everything that comes down the pike in repair or programs or policies. But for some strange reason, between water and sewer, we can't fund it. We can't fund it through Vermont State. And as you know, Vermont State's got a C-plus grade for infrastructure. And that's not going to get corrected overnight. So you're going to have many municipalities looking for funding, and it's going to be a jump ball whether Bennington gets funded from federal funds or state funds or grants. Will we be able to find any funding in the next year or the year after that?
Sam, it is unlikely that we will find grants that will fund entirely infrastructure projects that municipalities must do. But the two projects that we are proposing through the bond tonight are essentially funded by the state of Vermont through grants with a minor 2% fee. As you know, interest rates are running 5% to 6% on most purchases. So we are, in a sense, getting a break from the state, and they're using infrastructure monies that come to them from the federal government to help us fund, at a reduced rate, our infrastructure projects. So what you said is not entirely true.
Okay, I stand corrected. Is it safe to say that you're going to see, well, residents of Bennington are going to see an increase in their water and sewer bill because of our infrastructure?
Actually, there is a potential here, if this bond is passed, that we will finish these two projects much faster than we would have and actually save about $141,000 in annual expenses. That will allow us to do other minor projects, but yes, there will be a savings if this bond is approved.
Trying to get that to the general public of Bennington. I'm a little insulted at the turnout at our town meeting. As you know, my statement this year was trying to get voter increase to turnout, attendance. I've been harping on it. It's a broken record on my agenda, day after day, for Bennington. I'd like to see everybody get involved and place their mark. But it's not happening in the town. We have new people that come into the town that ask questions and really don't get any direction on when to vote, who's our select board, how is our government set up. I hope the town works more in favor of when people come into town. Instead of waiting for them to get answers or ask answers, you go to the new people and state, "This is how we're set up," because we seem to be detached. You're saying that we're inviting people to come in and live here in Bennington in our town, but we're not really communicating with them. There is really no funding for this? You can't go for federal funding on this? I can't understand why 8% is going on this. And you know there's going to be more infrastructure that needs repair, yet we decide to go into other policies and spend money with grants and other protocol and school and Ben High. We just got to tighten our budget, that's all.
Thank you, Sam.
Oh, and by the way, I'm voting no.
Noted. Karen had her hand up. I'm sorry. I should have worn my eyeglasses. I apologize. Sorry.
Nancy White.
Nancy, I'm sorry.
Stu, did you say the 8.75 increase is because of inflation for the budget?
Principally, yes.
Well, really, it's because the select board chose not to cut a dollar when town officials gave it to the select board. There are cuts that can and must be made in the budget they chose not to. We could have had a much lower...
That's your opinion, Nancy.
I'm sorry?
That's your opinion.
Well, anybody who went over that budget list knows there's cuts that can and must be made. Homeowners in this town cannot continue to take these increases. And a lot of people renting apartments can't afford to either. You know as well as I do, Stu, the select board used to always cut budgets when town officials gave them to them. Last year, I don't think there was a cut made in the budget with an increase of over 5%. I hope voters are going to start doing the job that the select board won't do for us.
Thank you, Nancy. I saw another hand raised in the back. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Ned Perkins. I'm a resident of Bennington. Last week, I obtained a copy of the loan agreement between the Town and the Bennington Community Market. And I'd like to share a letter that I emailed to the members of the Select Board on Friday. Dear Jeannie, Jean, Jim, Sarah, Bruce, Gary, and Tom, I've reviewed the loan agreement between the Town of Bennington and the Bennington Community Market alongside of the revolving loan information document and the application form, which I downloaded from the economic development page on the Town's website. I've also reviewed the select board minutes from the time that the loan agreement was executed. I have several concerns which I'd like to share. As outlined on the information document, the revolving loan program offers loans with a normal maximum loan amount of $35,000, with an interest rate of 50% of prime plus two points, and with a maximum term of 15 years. In reviewing the note executed by the Town with the Community Market, it's apparent that the terms as signed lie outside these parameters in three significant and material ways. The loan amount is $200,000, interest rate of 0%, and a term of 20 years. The loan program information document also specifies on the decision tree on page eight, that if the Development Director and Loan Committee accept a loan application, application and business plan are forwarded to Select Board for decision. The requirement for Select Board approval is repeated in the approval box on page three of the application form, which calls for documentation of loan amount approved by Select Board and interest rate approved by Select Board. I searched the Select Board minutes from the time that the loan transaction took place, and I did not find documentation of a Select Board vote approving the loan, although I did find this in the December 27, 2021 minutes. Nancy White questioned the staff's decision to recommend a loan of $200,000 to the newly proposed nonprofit grocery store in the former Al Caro Building on Main Street. The manager and the vice chair explained that the process is a policy-driven one that has existed for many years. A board vote is not required for the staff to act. Well, that certainly contradicts the published policies. My questions to you as members of the Select Board are, did you vote to approve this loan? Were the published procedures for granting the loan properly followed? Were you aware that the terms of the note included a 0% interest rate? Are you aware that the terms of the note have already been renegotiated, pushing the first payment back another six months to July 15, 2023? Did the Community Development Director act within the bounds of her authority when she executed the note? Now, I wish the New Community Market good luck.
Ned, if I can interrupt, I counted five questions there. And I think in fairness, I think it's fair to ask the questions, and I think it's fair to expect it's Town Business. This is a good place to air that question. But having asked five questions...
I just...
I do want to give the Select Board and the officers a chance to respond. Okay.
Let me give a quick closing. Just, I think there's been a complete lack of transparency to date regarding this transaction. And it certainly appears that the loan was made behind closed doors with extraordinary terms and without proper approval in clear violation of documented policy. And I urge you, as our elected representatives, to clear the air and to share with the public all the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ned.
All right. So I'll start. I'll start.
Jeannie Jenkins.
Thank you, Ned. And thank you for your questions. And I did respond to you, but it was not until today. So first of all, the Select Board does not make the final decision on the revolving loan. The revolving loan fund was set up to assist new businesses and existing businesses that wanted to expand or needed to do a variety of things to be more profitable in our community. So the idea of the revolving loan is that we are a lender of last resort. So what that means is that if a businessperson has gotten the loans that they can get through a commercial bank or other entities, then they should do so. If they need additional funding, then the Town wants to help them be successful. So the revolving loan has been in existence, and I'll turn to Stu for how many years, or Shannon, but it's been around for a while. It's been highly successful. The loans that have gone out, the return rate has been phenomenal. I believe it's over 90%. It's in the 90s. So very, very, very few people have not fully repaid their loans. So the idea is to keep those loans going out and coming back in. The information, Ned, that you shared about the Select Board having the authority to, or being the authorized body to okay loans, is not accurate. And so I immediately followed up with Jonah to say, "I don't know where this information is on the website, but it's inaccurate." As far as I know, the Select Board's not had, if it's ever had that authority, it's not had it for a very long time. That authority lies with the Community Development Director, and before that position existed, with the Economic and Community Development Director. And so we do hear about any loan application that comes into the Community Development Office. And that is done in executive session. Because we do not want to have, none of us would want to be in front of a public body saying, "Do you think we should give a loan to this person? What do you think about them? What do you think about their business?" So that discussion happens in executive session. And what happens is the Community Development Director comes to us in executive session, shares the application with us ahead of time. We have a full airing of it, and that includes how are they planning to use the money, how much money do they want to borrow, what interest rate would be something that would allow them to actually do the work and be profitable at the end of the day. And we also always ask, how much money is in the fund? How much money is coming in? Do we want to make sure we have enough money so that if a new business comes into town, we're able to make sure that we can help that business if they ask? So we are always fully informed. We have a discussion with the Community Development Director. And in the end, if we have any concerns, we share those with her, and then she makes the final decision and has the final conversations and, you know, does the work. So that's the general picture. My understanding is Jonah has gone in and found the erroneous information on the website and corrected that. I have no idea where that came from. Do you want to say something?
That information was on the website in 2013, and it did carry over to the redesign of the new website. And I'm working with Shannon to update that information.
Okay. Thank you. So it is not, as you know, Ned, it's possible for anyone in the community to see what loans have been made through the revolving loan fund, but it is not information that the Select Board has immediate control over, nor does it feel appropriate to have that level of conversation in public. I'll certainly open it to any other Select Board members if you want to add anything, and then, Stu, if you want to add anything.
Well, I'd be glad to add, on the length of this program, this program has existed for more than 40 years here in Bennington. It's been operated pretty much the same way for those 40 years. Just to correct you a little bit, Jeannie, the board has the authority to veto a proposal that we put before them. They have the authority to request more information if they're unhappy with the information and the due diligence that we have provided. But once we have gone through that process, if the board has no objection, then we are authorized to issue the loan. The documents and the program do allow us to waive any of those requirements that Mr. Perkins has read in the case of need or necessary changes to the program. We have waived those limits numerous times over the years, most frequently in the Putnam Project. We issued a loan for $300,000 to the Putnam Project. I believe it was $300,000. I'll look for Shannon to correct me if I'm wrong.
$350,000.
Thank you, Shannon. $350,000. The interest payments were deferred for seven years, and then the payment process starts then to be paid back. We currently have over $500,000 available to us to loan to existing businesses. And many of the new businesses in the downtown have taken advantage of this program, some for $35,000, as the stated limit is, but others for more than that, and others for multiple times. So it's a program that I think has benefited Bennington over these last 40 or more years, and it has operated pretty much the same way. When businesses are asked to present confidential information to us, we don't believe it is appropriate for that confidential information to be shared at a public meeting. And therefore, we have been operating in this way for a number of years. Once the loan is approved by the Town, then obviously, the loan documents and the loan amounts and... amounts and the interest rates are all provided to the public and are easily available.
I recognize Jim Carroll, who had his hand up as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I can only say that Stu Hert stole all my thunder.
Jim, you win the prize for most succinct point tonight so far. Is there anybody else that would like to state from, Sarah?
Sure, yeah, I just want to thank you, Mr. Perkins, for bringing that up and for that correction, because I think that that may have been up there, Jonah, for quite some time, so I think that deserves to be corrected. Thank you.
Nancy White.
Bennington taxpayers pay the person who is the community development director. She is not elected, and we cannot hold her accountable. This money has belonged to the town for 40 years. The taxpayers have paid to maintain it. We pay the people to work for it. It isn't just for businesses. It's also for homeowners or landlords that can also use it. Anybody wanting $100,000 from our town should be willing to come publicly and talk about the basic details to the public, and it should be the select board approving it. We've been very fortunate so far, but there are some loans that haven't been paid back, and if somebody makes three loans that go bad, and they're big loans, so I think it is up to the select board to be approving the loans over $100,000, and I think the public should be able to hear the basics. The reason I came before you is I read we made a $200,000 loan to a brand-new nonprofit. Nobody knew anything about them, and to this day, nobody involved with this group has ever come here to talk to the public. And the more I read about it, it sounds like it's for Bennington County, and it's going to benefit the Berkshires. And if that's the case, then other towns should have been making loans too. But the bottom line is, the select board, you're accountable for the money that we have.
Thank you. Any other points on this or any other topic? Sam?
Can we go on to a different subject, or just go on to a subject?
Why don't you step forward, and if there's nothing further on this subject, is there anybody else on the board that wanted to give any further comment on that? Hearing nothing, Sam, your question.
As you know, a few days ago on the flats, North Side Drive, Business District, for those of you that don't know what the flats are, I was born on the flats. Stu knows what I'm talking about. There's a very bad fire at 153 North Side Drive. Question: With the exuberant amounts of water being used, how did that affect our water municipal supply? Did it lower pressure, increase pressure? Did some people lose pressure? Were there's cloudy water or whatever? I heard through the grapevine that too much water was used off our stick ladder truck, and that's a concern to me.
Stu, I'm going to give you some discretion as to how you want to address. I don't think the fighting of a fire on private property is necessarily property to be discussed here. It's an emergency situation. There's people who lost property and valuables. You know, candidly, Sam, I think you're questioning the tactics of firefighters who aren't here to answer the question. I don't know that anybody here really has the expertise to say what's proper or not in terms of water usage for a fire. Having been said, Stu, is there anything you would care to add?
Well, I would say that it is possible. Normally, high fire flows used in our downtown area, and flats, because they are at the lower elevations, might be considered the same. There may have been people in the Crescent Boulevard, Jefferson Heights, Margaret Lane area that may have seen a pressure depreciation or pressure drop, and that is why we hope to have the voters approve the $5.8 million bond so we can address that within our water system. Thank you for asking, though, Sam.
No, because I've heard on scanner reports that North Usec was responding, ready to draw water from Waloosack. So, you know, for those of you that don't know the area, there's a lot of houses that are in close proximity, but fully engulfed fire at 1:30 in the morning. I want to thank the fire department, the village, and the town, and mutual aid did an exceptional job.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions about the town report for the town officers before we get to the economic development report? Seeing none, we're going to bring up, we're going to bring up our economic development director and our information director. Communications coordinator, sorry about that. Better known as Shannon and Jonah. So I'll turn it over to Shannon and Jonah.
All right, well, welcome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town Meeting Day. I'm Shannon Barsadi, Community Development Director for the town of Bennington.
And I'm Jonah Spivak. I'm the communications coordinator for the town, and we're honored to present to you this town report at our 261st town meeting. Do you want to reintroduce yourself closer to the mic?
Sure. I'm Shannon Barsadi, Community Development Director for the town of Bennington. We want to start with the Bennington vision statement. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life. And the motto for the town is serving people through teamwork.
Before European settlers arrived, if you know me, you know I like background, these lands were inhabited by Native Americans for thousands of years. A nice display of the archaeological work done at the 279 Overpass area is at the Bennington Welcome Center, just north of town. Bennington has a rich history, and it's unique in being Vermont's first town. Chartered in 1749, but not settled until 1761, Samuel Robinson got a look at what would become Bennington while on his way to fight in the French and Indian War. He returned as a leader of the first group of settlers. Our town is named after the colonial governor of New Hampshire who sold these lands, despite the fact that they were also claimed by New York. You could say that New York had the better legal claim, but Benny Wenworth was quicker to act. That whole controversy would take many years in a revolutionary war to sort out, but that's a story for another day. And I apologize. We are currently the fifth-largest town in Vermont.
All right, well, we're here tonight to give you some highlights from the town report from each town department. So we'd like to start with the Bennington Police Department. Community policing has been a primary focus for the Bennington Police Department over the past few years. That work has included the development of all new policies and procedures, and most recently, they're working on a new procedure for handling complaints. They work closely with the newly-formed Community Policing Advisory Review Board, the CPAR, and we're one of just a few hundred communities nationwide with a citizen advisory board. The Bennington Police Department runs a successful drug takeback program in partnership with Southwestern Vermont Health Care, the Drug Enforcement Agency, and local pharmacies to safely remove unwanted and unused prescription drugs. And although they're still short-staffed, which is a nationwide problem, BPD has brought on new officers in the past year, as well as a human trafficking case manager. There've been ongoing officer trainings, including mental health first responder training, and they organize a popular community programs like National Night Out at Willow Park and the New Experience Camp for teens, as well as, in 2022, the return of the bike rodeo.
Like our police department, our fire department provides an essential service to our community. Described by historian Phil Holland as "our modern-day militiamen," continuing the tradition of being ready to serve in an emergency at a moment's notice. They respond to hundreds of calls each year ranging from fires to vehicle crashes, police and medical assists, and various miscellaneous calls. And speaking of tradition, the Bennington Fire Department has also been the keepers of our Bennington Battle Day Parade for now the last 58 years. They also do fire prevention training in the five schools in our area, reaching out to 125 students in the past year, and this year, a new ladder truck. Our fire department is made up of all volunteers, and they are currently seeking more members. If you are interested, please do consider becoming a volunteer fireman. If you are interested, just contact an active fireman or give them a call at the fire department.
So our Hyre department, Department of Public Works, has a huge job. They maintain all roads, curbs, sidewalks, culverts, and vegetation along roads. That's 120 miles of roads, 41 miles of sidewalks. In 2022, they also installed a new sewer main, drainage, curb, sidewalks, and paving on Maple Street. They rebuilt Franklin Lane to improve pedestrian safety, cleared and built a gravel road from Colville Road to the town woodlot in Woodford. And the Department of Public Works also manages over 500 acres of town forestland in Bennington and the surrounding towns.
Water is one of Bennington's historic strengths. The ability to harness running water contributed to Bennington's early industrial development is a key component of a healthy community and now a revenue stream as we sell excess water from the Morgan Spring to bottled water companies. On the left, we have an 1891 map of Bennington showing the historic Morgan Spring, which is located on Gage Street in front of what is now our Bennington Community Recreation Center. And on the right is a picture of our current water source, the Bowles Brook in Woodford. Each spring, a screen is placed at the Bowles Brook water source to pre-filter large debris for the summer months. Getting that filter can be a tricky job, sliding that thing in there. From its source in Bowles Brook, our town water goes to our water treatment facility. And if you look right at the top of those stairs there, that blue turbine, the water that comes into the facility runs and generates electricity to help offset the electrical cost for that facility. On average, 1.4 million gallons per day are treated and delivered. The cost for residential flat water rate customers comes to $1.71 per day for unlimited use. That's about $20 less per month than the average US citizen. Residents can choose to switch to a metered water system if you prefer, while commercial customers are already required to have water meters. From the water treatment to your homes through an extensive network of pipes. Repairing and placing water mains and sewer lines are a regular occurrence. You can see here the work on County Street, which involve both. The town is also continuing with the lead service line replacement work, which is progressing very well. And we do encourage you to vote in favor of the bond votes for Gage Street and the south-end water system upgrades. This is work the state is requiring us to do, and by using a bond, we will get it done quicker and cheaper than continuing to just chip away at it year after year. And of course, the last piece of the water system puzzle is our wastewater treatment facility. It treats anywhere from between four and four-and-a-half million gallons of wastewater per day. And continuing on costs, the total cost for residents for sewer services is $1.61 per day for the flat-rate use. That's about $8 less per month than the average US citizen pays. That means that households pay a total of $3.32 per day total for water and sewer combined, with an average savings of over $25 a month compared to the US average. Oh, more water stuff! Who knew? The wastewater facility has been working on upgrades over the last few years. That work includes rehabbing the primary digester, replacing and rehabbing pumps and piping, and rebuilding the RBCs, or the rotation biological contactors. Those are what does the heavy lifting, the heavy lifting of naturally removing waste. By the way, the biggest culprit requiring prescreening in our system is flushable wipes. Yeah, simply put, they are not flushable. Do us all a favor and don't do it.
So our planning and permitting department does many jobs, but they also oversee the bike and pedestrian pathways initiative. So after many years in the works, we now have a new paved rail trail that begins at the River Street entrance across from the Bennington Station and goes on to Orchard Road and then beyond, and we're working on planning extensions to connect to the Ninja Trail so that there'll be a paved pathway connecting North Bennington all the way to downtown Bennington. The planning and permitting department also updated the development regulations for the former Southern Vermont College campus to encourage redevelopment there, and they're beginning work with the town's planning commission on an updated town plan with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Community development, that's us. So my focus is really downtown development, community recreation, and expanding affordable housing. So just in 2022 alone, in our designated downtown, we had 3.2 million in both public and private investment, and that's not even including the areas outside, such as the Holden Leonard Mill that was recently purchased. So I oversee many of the state and federal grants that are coming to the town for development. I also manage the town's revolving loan fund and the town marketing campaign, Vermont Begins Here. In community recreation, in 2022, I've been working closely with the YMCA, the Senior Center, Council on Aging, and Meals on Wheels on the Ben High redevelopment. We also completed a new history, arts, and recreation kiosk that's behind the Putnam Block, and recreation wayfinding signs around town. We hosted our first trail fest with the Appalachian Trail community and received grants for the Waloosack River Walk and for the Rec Center green space. In affordable housing, we received community development block grant funding for the Bennington Family Housing Project in partnership with Shire's Housing and the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, and for the recovery housing projects on North Street and Gage Street.
The main focus of my position is to get information out to the community. Not always good news, as one of our biggest stories was the tragic vandalism of the village cemetery this past fall, but a story with a happy ending, as the community came together in a really extraordinary way to write every single overturned stone. We also greatly value input from our residents, and we take this very seriously, and an example of that is a public meeting this Thursday on the Y Woods that you're all invited to join us at. I also get to help plan celebratory events, such as the rail trail opening that will occur later this spring. Additionally, I handle the town's social media, the recently redesigned Unified Town website, which apparently still has some outdated information on there. Sorry about that. And I'm very active in helping plan for the upcoming 250th anniversaries. Our Buildings and Grounds team is always busy. They are tasked with the maintenance of all our parks and recreational sites, as well as all of our town buildings, including the one we're in here. They help with major projects, such as the recreation center pool update, maintaining all the playing fields, and they also help out with small projects every day, such as helping move community bikes or even setting up for this public meeting we're at right now. On the bottom left, you can see the new electric mower at work. That's part of our town's overall effort to reduce our carbon footprint.
So parks and recreation, Jonah mentioned our Buildings and Grounds Department, which is working on all of our parks. We also partner with the Bennington branch of the YMCA to manage all of our town recreation programs. These include running the town's community recreation center, where we have a popular indoor pool, weight room, and summer camps. And the Y has greatly expanded programs for youth through swim lessons, intro-to-sports classes, summer camps, and after-school programs. They've also expanded senior wellness programming at the Bennington Sports Center, and this can continue to grow with more space at Ben High. There's one more. Since COVID, more teens have started using the community recreation center, including my teens, and the Y recently received a grant from Vermont After School to expand teen
The Town Offices is the heart of town government. It is located at 205 South Street. You're all welcome to stop in anytime. It is in what was originally the Henry G. Root Homestead, built in 1844. The house was donated to the town for municipal use by his descendants in 1920. It is now home to the town's clerk's office, as well as our town records going back 261 years. It also includes the listers and assessors office, health officer, zoning and code enforcement, finance and collections, HR, town management, and support staff, as well as Shannon and I.
And our town is more than just a town department and a select board. We're grateful to the dozens of residents who participate by serving on our local boards and community. and commissions, including the Select Board, the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, the Development Review Board, Energy Committee, Historic Preservation Commission, Bennington Housing Authority, Board of Listers, Planning Commission, Board of Abatement, and Board of Civil Authority. If you're someone who wants to be more involved in our community, serving on one of these boards is a way that you, as a resident, can be directly involved in our town and help serve the community as a whole.
And we thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate you coming out.
Any questions for Shannon or Jonah? That's a great report. Sam.
Sam, we're speaking of Bennington, Vermont. So correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have an economic developer in this town anymore, correct?
Who are you?
Anybody that wants to answer the question.
Sam, we work with Bennington County Regional Commission for Economic Development Services. What we have struggled with over the years is economic development and community development are very closely tied. And what we found was that if one person was trying to do economic development and community development, they, both sides suffered. So community development, I think, has served us really well, and Shannon has been like extraordinary staff person to do that. But we get our strictly our economic development services through BCRC, which works countywide to to support all the
Yeah, which is Mike McDonough, right?
I'm sorry?
Who supersedes that, which is Mike McDonough, right?
No.
Well, who's had a BCRC? Well, Bill Calvin now, but usually Mr. McDonough, which
No, Sam, Sam, you're out of order. What's the question?
Sorry if I'm interrupting you, Mr. Morrison.
Sam, Jim, you keep quiet, too. If you have a question or a discussion point
All I'm trying to do is communicate with my select board. Okay? I'm communicating, it boos me that somebody from the select board answered one of my questions instead of our town manager. Okay? I'm looking, there's a famous person, John Morton from New York State, that says between transparency and communication, you gain trust. And that's the Honda commercial on TV. You folks should watch it. Through transparency and communication, you gain trust. And that's what I'm aiming for in this town. I work with Jonah on the Facebook page, you folks know it, you see my posts on what it is. You put something out, boom, I hit it right back out to the general public to educate all you folks out there, because you don't read the banner, you don't get your information, and I'm trying to get people educated and learn. So my statement again, we don't have an economic developer. We have a community development. And all it is is a magician act to see how wonderful we are. We need some serious development in this town. The hospital develops getting people coming here to find housing so they can come over here and live here. I'm conversing with one person that's coming in from Newport, Vermont, that's seriously looking for some housing. And the hospital is helping them. We've got people coming into this town, they come here, how many people leave in the middle of the night? I want to know that answer. Thank you.
We are now at the point of the evening where we have agencies that are in the budget and yes, Nancy?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
We always paid for a person in the town office. That was the Economic and Community Development Director. And the title Economic was dropped a few years ago. The BCRC doesn't even have a report in this year's town report or last year's. We should not have a county regional group in charge of our town economy. We should have somebody in the town office. We pay enough people to do that, to be on top of what we need for our economic development. If this is what you've chosen to do, is to have the BCR take it over, we need to get the BCRC out. They're pushing an agenda for the state. The state agenda is not necessarily best for Bennington. We pay the people in our town office, and these are the people we need to hold accountable for our local economy, which has been doing practically nothing for the past 10 to 15 years.
Nancy, I do want to respond by saying that community development is housing, is economic development. The improvements we've made to recreation and attention to youth and seniors, the attention we've paid to housing across the spectrum from affordable to market rate, the attention that we have put on the revolving loan fund, for instance, many of the, virtually all of the businesses that we have seen come to town have utilized that fund. We are, we are very much on the economic development front, but it is from a community development perspective. So please don't misinterpret community development as not being connected to economic development. They are entirely connected.
Economic was in that job title for 30 or 40 years. And getting our economy going is what's going to make Bennington affordable for everybody. We're paying for everything you're talking about, that you just talked about. It isn't doing much to bring money to our town budget. What it's doing is driving up the cost of people who pay tax bills. We need somebody on the phone in the town office that is calling, trying to get private sector jobs with good pay and benefits to come here, because we've lost far too many private sector jobs. If people can't afford to live in our town, how are they going to help us pay taxes? The shift of housing in this town is way out of whack. Homeowners are carrying too much of the burden. Each year, we have more people who can't afford help to pay. We're paying close to $1 million a year to nonprofits. We've done that for many years. And all I keep hearing is, well, Bennington needs to do more. The taxpayers go above and beyond, and we need help with our economy. That should be our number one goal in Bennington.
And I'm not saying it's not.
Charles.
It's interesting for me to hear the differentiation between community and economic. I think that you're right on spot, that economic development is part of community development. They're inseparable. And I noticed on page 21, now you tell me if I'm reading it wrong, permitting, planning, and code enforcement was $25 million last year, or in 2021, whereas in 2022, it was $48 million. That's quite a significant increase. Something's happening in the town, and those figures prove it.
Okay. Thank you. In the green, yes, please, come forward.
Lorna Sheridan, a Bennington resident. I think the presentation by Shannon Barsadi and Jonas Pivak really shows that the town is communicating information, valuable information of how our government works, communicating to the citizens, which somebody claimed our town government was not doing. And I guess the second point is that I'm hearing a lot of criticism of the select board and how the town is operating, especially from two people tonight. And they have raised a number of points. And certainly, we need citizens to be engaged in watching the select board and speaking up if they think something is going wrong. But I think the select board has been doing a great job, including responding professionally and civilly to questions. And I'm concerned that if there's a lot of negativity directed to the select board, we are not going to be getting good candidates to be willing to serve.
Thank you. As the veterans at this meeting know, there are several agencies that may be here to speak, but are there any further questions about anything in the town report or questions that you have for your select board or your town officers? The list I have starts with the agencies in the budget, and there are some that have RSVP'd, there are some that have not. So I'm going to go through the list. I've got a maximum of three minutes per person to speak about their agency and their funding request is asked for, because it is a fairly long list. And frankly, if we took three minutes on each, we'd still be here for quite a while. So first, I'm not sure I see her here, but is Lynn Fontenot McCann here from the Bennington Free Library? They're in the, these, the first six are all in the budget, they're not individual items. The second is the interim director of the Bennington Rescue Squad, Bill Camarda. Is he here tonight? Bill, please come on up.
Hello, everybody. Bill Camarda, Bennington Rescue Interim Executive Director, resident here at Bennington, 8 Greenview Drive. I appreciate the time and opportunity. I don't have a whole lot to say, because I have been in the position for all of about five and a half weeks now. But I do appreciate the support of our residents and our select board for the Bennington Rescue Squad. We have been trying to make some big changes over the last five to six weeks. And as you all know, costs have gone up significantly over the last year and a half or so, and that affects everybody, especially those of us in healthcare. What we are doing, just because there have been some questions out there in the community and social media, is that we have eliminated the additional administrative position of our former executive director. We're replacing our fleet with some more economical van ambulances. So we're eliminating five of those big box ambulances that you see out on the road, and we're going to drop down to a fleet total of five units. We're using apprenticeship and our education incentives to train people from the community to join Bennington Rescue. No training required. So please keep an eye out if you are seeking employment with some pretty decent benefits. The pay is okay, but the benefits are all right, and we'll pay you for your training. And then you have the opportunity to become advanced EMTs or paramedics. So mostly, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak before this board and for your consideration of our funding and the increase that we did get this year. So we are asking all voters to please vote yes on Article One for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I don't see Bill Calvin here from the BCRC. Is Jenny Rosicky here from the John McCullough Free Library in North Bennington? I don't see her.
I'm fully on Jenny Rosicky. I wanted to know, Jenny's my wife, she had to make a very tough decision on whether to go to the Shaftesbury Town Meeting today or this. She wanted me to communicate her thanks to the board and everyone who supports the library. And a quick reminder, the library was requested level funding this year. So she communicates her thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Rosicky. Thank you. Is Camille Kaufman here from Perrin Recreation? I don't see Camille. And is Mary Rogers here from the North Bennington Village Board of Trustees? I don't see her. Okay. Next, these are, Article Three is a $5,000 appropriation to the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. Is Jenna Caslin here? Jenna.
All right. So I wrote something so I could keep this short and sweet, my three minutes. So my name's Jenna Caslin. I'm the Director of the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. We're well-known in the community for our DBA, the Bennington County Child Advocacy Center. Our office is located here in Bennington at 129 Elm Street. We provide support services such as forensic interviews and coordinated case management for children who have experienced egregious physical abuse and individuals of all ages who have experienced sexual abuse. We work with clients from the time of their disclosure through the disposition of their case and oftentimes beyond that as they continue to heal. We also provide community outreach and prevention education on the topics of child sexual abuse. To learn more about the services, so I don't take up too much time, you can check out our website, it's www.bccac.org. And I hope that you'll consider voting yes again for the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse this year. Thank you.
Jenna, thank you. Next, Article Four is a $5,000 appropriation for Project Against Violent Encounters, also known as PAVE. And you must be Lindsay Brilliant.
I am.
Okay.
I too wrote something, so I don't go off script. Hello, my name is Lindsay Brilliant. I'm here representing PAVE as the agency's director. Most of you know that we are the domestic violence agency for the county of Bennington. Our emergency shelter and our offices are located directly in the town of Bennington. Over the last year, PAVE, along with the rest of the community, has witnessed the impact of community violence on Bennington. We know that community-level violence, which includes domestic and sexual violence, is a result of a combination of factors: lack of economic opportunity, substance misuse, and untreated mental health issues, among others, all combined to create this issue. The only true way to combat this violence in our community is through partnership. No one agency, no one nonprofit, no one grant or initiative is going to solve the problem. Over the last year, PAVE interacted with approximately, one new survivor every day our office was open. 110 of these survivors reported that they were residents of Bennington. We continue to operate our 24-hour crisis line, as well as provide emergency shelter to fleeing survivors, among other services. We are able to provide prevention education to 350 children in our first quarter through partnerships with local schools and early childhood centers. Our goal remains to promote a world where everyone can enjoy a life free from interpersonal violence. And we acknowledge that to do this, we need to help tackle the issues that promote violence in the first place. We hope that the town of Bennington will approve our request for level funding to help us enable, to help enable us to continue to work alongside our community partners for a town that is safe for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Next, Article Five, Lenora Volkmer for a $5,500 appropriation to the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program, also known as RSVP.
Yes, thank you very much. Hi, I'm Lenora Volkmer. I'm the Bennington County Volunteer Coordinator for Green Mountain RSVP, as just stated. And we are currently located at 160 Benmont Ave in the Vermont Mill Building. I would like to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our program. Thank you to the community members of Bennington for your past support, and of course, thank you to our volunteers for the service that each of you provide to the community. Currently, our volunteers provide service to the Bennington community and surrounding towns in the following ways: providing free tax preparation through the AARP Tax Aid Service, delivering meals and supporting the cafe for Bennington County Meals on Wheels, providing companionship services through the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, assisting with monthly Red Cross blood drives, helping at His Food Pantry located at Sacred Heart St. Francis de Sales Church, making quilts and knitting mittens and hats for those in need, participating in our Sunshine Postcard Project by writing cheerful notes for socially isolated individuals, as well as by providing support to the Bennington Senior Center, Bennington Free Library, Bennington Museum, Bennington Project Independence, Better Bennington Corp., Greater Bennington Community Services, and Park McCullough House. In collaboration with the Bennington Free Library, one of our volunteers helps to lead a free virtual book club for adults aged 60-plus called the Third Thursday Readers. And our volunteers also provide a free book delivery service called Books on Wheels. Our trained volunteer leaders also offer bone builders classes at the Bennington Senior Center, Homestead Muse, and St. Peter's Episcopal Church. For more information about our program, you may visit our website, www.rsvpvt.org. Our program is requesting level funding, and your support is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lenora. Next, on Article Six, we have Tom Donahue, who's the CEO of Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont, to speak about his appropriation.
Hey, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Tom.
I wanted to say, I don't like to talk to us as slide on the wastewater treatment, but when I was a Rutland City Alderman, they put a big plaque up on the wastewater treatment plant, and my name was on it. And I'm not sure really exactly what that was saying about me. But anyway, speaking of treatment, I wanted to mention a saying that I have, which is the foundation of a great community is only as strong as how we treat our most vulnerable. At Brock Community Action, we have a two-pronged approach to helping people in need. The first prong is helping people through crisis, and the second prong, providing a sustainable path forward. We want to help make forward. We want to help make Bennington better, stronger, and safer. Some examples of our programs and the dollars and cents are as follows for the last year. Working with Molly Stark Elementary and the four family engagement specialists at SVSU, this winter, we provided cold-weather clothing to 42 families. We operate Brock Community Food Shelf five days a week, and we continue our special senior hour on Friday afternoons. That doesn't apply to you. In Bennington County, last year, we provided over $115,000 in crisis fuel assistance. We helped homeless families living in motels or elsewhere by providing over $46,000 in rapid-resolution housing assistance. We also master leased three Bennington apartments to transition homeless families to permanent, stable housing. For 33 small businesses in the Bennington area, we provided $5,000 recovery grants, including four startup businesses, a total of $165,000 in grants to Bennington's smallest businesses. Those are businesses of five employees and under. We are responsible for implementing the state's home weatherization program in the county, and we provided nearly $325,000 in free home weatherization just to Bennington town residents alone, $325,000 in home weatherization last year, just to Bennington town residents alone. This included emergency furnace repairs and replacement and oil tank repair and replacement, too. As a critical focus of our efforts at Brock Community Action, we have positioned our staff to provide application assistance to avoid eviction, disconnection, and foreclosure for residents. We worked in partnership with the Vermont State Housing Authority, VSHA, and assisted them in providing over $6 million in emergency rental assistance last year, over $10 million total so far to 1,263 applicants in Bennington County. These rents go directly to the landlord and utility payments to the town of Bennington and local utility companies, thus stabilizing both the tenant and the landlord, which is sort of a pandemic-period program, which will be coming to conclusion soon. We worked with the Vermont Housing Finance Agency, VHFA, to provide Bennington homeowners with mortgage arrears, property taxes, and utility payments up to $30,000 per applicant. These funds are directed to the lenders, utility providers, to the town of Bennington, and for delinquent property taxes, water, and sewer bills as well. The quick snapshot demonstrates over $6.6 million provided by us to assist Bennington area residents in need last year, $6.6 million. Our organization does even more, and I encourage you to go to brock.org or follow us on all the social medias, and that will give you a snapshot of our daily initiatives. We do many. After three long years navigating COVID and now the cost of living straining family budgets, our assistance is more important to Bennington residents than ever before, and we sincerely value the town's support, and we thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next, Article Seven is a request for a $7,000 appropriation for the Vermont Center for Independent Living, and Sarah Lunderville is here tonight. Charlie Murphy's here tonight.
Good evening. My name is, oh, hey. Good evening. My name is Charlie Murphy. I'm a peer advocate counselor here at the Vermont Center for Independent Living Office. VCL was founded in 1979 as a grassroots cross-disability, disability rights organization. We have our central office in Montpelier, a branch office is in Burlington, Rutland, Bennington, and Brattleboro. Our office here in Bennington is on the corner of Valentine and Main, 601 Main Street, in the Nichols Annex of the First Baptist Church. Services that VCL offers are as follows. As I mentioned, I'm a peer advocate counselor. Wendy Lyons is also a peer advocate counselor at our office. We are people with disabilities. Everybody in our peer advocacy counseling program has a disability of one sort or another. We help other folks with disabilities find resources, problem-solve, and help them attain the independent living goal that they come to us for help with. We also try to work at helping them become their own advocate, so they can do self-advocacy and not be dependent upon us repeatedly. We also have a program called the Sue Williams Freedom Fund that provides up to $1,500 for a particular type of device or piece of equipment that can help people live more independently. There's also the Home Access Program, which provides ramping and primary entryway ramping, as well as doorway widening, if necessary, of that primary entryway, and bathroom modification. There's also, we also provide Meals on Wheels for people under the age of 60 in emergency, short-term and long-term situations. It's based upon whether the person can, can or cannot prepare a meal on their own. Unfortunately, it isn't based upon food insecurity, which is the big deal right now. And we also, in closing, have a program called the Vermont Equipment Distribution Program, which helps people buy communication devices to, for example, a lot of the people that apply for it are people that are hard of hearing, are deaf, or people have difficulty using a conventional cell phone or landline, and that's pretty much what VCL is all about. If you'd like to go to our website, it's www.vcil.org, and I want to thank people for, you know, inviting us here to speak about VCL, and I would encourage people to vote for our funding, Article Seven, tomorrow. And my phone number, if you want to reach me and to talk about VCL, my phone number is 802-445-3015. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, on Article Eight is a $7,500 allergies, not COVID. Article Eight is a $7,500 request for an appropriation for Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging Incorporated. Is Rosemary Green here? Well, you're not Rosemary Green. Well, you don't, you don't need to be, so if you could just state your name, please.
I'm Brian Hashi. I'm a resident of Bennington, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Council on Aging, and Rosemary Green is our executive director, and I'm here on her behalf. Once again, I'm asking the select board and the town residents to approve $7,500, which they have done for many years, to support the Council on Aging. As you know, we have offices on Benmont Ave in the old Mill Building, and we operate about 12 programs for seniors, and it's quite a range of programs. Probably the most popular and well-known one is the Meals on Wheels, which served over 25,000 Bennington residents last year. I mean, 25,000 meals to 170 residents. And we also have a cafe called the Meals on Wheels Cafe that's located in the Senior Center Building, which served another 7,000 meals. But in addition to that high-profile program, there's quite a few other services that the case manages that work for the council, coordinate for the seniors throughout Bennington, and it includes things like making sure that they have, in addition to food, access to mental health care, insurance through the State of Vermont, transportation, caregiver services, and a number of other services. So it's quite a range, which kind of amazed me when I first discovered that, being on the Board of Directors for the council, so. And I think the other valuable component, as you heard a little while ago from Lenora, was the RSVP program, and a lot of these programs that help seniors in Bennington are facilitated by volunteers that Lenora and some of the other RSVP people are finding to help out, especially like in companion and caregiving services. So I, once again, thank you for the support that you've had for the council over many years at the $7,500 level, and I hope that everyone says yes tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I know Sean Marie Oler is here. She's here to talk about a $10,000 request for the Bennington, or the Tutorial Center, which is Article Nine tomorrow.
We used to be the Bennington Tutorial Center. I'm Sean Marie Oler. I'm a Bennington resident, but I'm here as the Director of the Tutorial Center. I have my stopwatch, so I know I do not go over my three minutes, and I'd like to thank the town
I've got mine, too, Sean.
I'd like to thank the citizens of Bennington for continually supporting the Tutorial Center. I brought Matt Bentley up. He is in charge of our adult ed. We work very closely with the Bennington schools in helping connect parents with tutoring. We also provide tutoring for really anybody from grade school right on up to whatever, and Matt will tell you a little bit about our adult ed program.
Slightly taller than Sean Marie. Yeah, Matthew Bentley. I am originally from Palma, but I am a Bennington resident as well. I am the Adult Ed and Literacy Director at the Tutorial Center. We provide many services, starting with ELL, ESL services for some of the refugees and new Americans that are coming to Vermont, specifically Bennington. Jeannie, you know all about that. We provide basic education services for anybody looking for employment as a workforce development or for employers. We also do it if they need a GED or diploma, if that is a goal of theirs. Also, even if you already have a GED or diploma and you're looking to improve skills for college, we provide all those services for free, as long as you are at least 16 years of age and a Vermont State resident. And specifically, the Tutorial Center is the only Vermont adult agency that represents only one county, so our focus is specifically on Bennington. And I was looking for some statistics as I was coming here today, and I thought I'd look up even the basic thing like literacy. So even though Vermont is a very intelligent state, and Bennington actually has a great literacy rate, there's still 4,800 people within the county of Bennington that are illiterate, and there is actually roughly 3,000 people that don't even have a high school diploma, and that's only for people in the statistics that are 25 years and older. So that doesn't include our youth that are leaving at young ages, at like 16 years old, dropping out of school, and one, not being able to read, and not being prepared for life and work and everything else that we actually help with. And we are a part of the, we are a group within Bennington. We work with the Department of Labor. We work with Weber Higher Ability, who changed their name from Vocary Hab, and one of our main focuses is getting people employed, but part of that is their education, and we all know that education is a big platform in improving people's lives. So thank you guys again. We've been here for 52 years, and we look forward to being here 52 more, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And statistic-wise, I have 10 seconds, but there are 33,000
You started late, but go ahead.
33,000 Vermonters age 25 and up that do not have a high school diploma, and 33,000 people who do not speak, quote, "English very well," and 7,000 who do not speak English well at all. Those are statistics from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Article 10 is a request for $11,000 from Bennington Project Independence, also known as BPI. I don't see Linda Wicklack. We don't have Linda Wicklack, but we have somebody else from BPI here.
Good evening. I'm not Linda Wicklack. I'm Linda Putney, but I am the President of the Board of Bennington Project Independence. Linda Wicklack couldn't be here tonight. Many of you probably, or most of you know about BPI, Bennington Project Independence. I'm going to start by asking you, what do you do, or what would you do, when your parent or spouse, or even your adult son or daughter, is unable to stay home to be independent anymore, and you are faced with the task of being a full-time caregiver, and maybe you are still working? What if you can't afford to hire help to provide care for 16 to 8 hours a day, and the only option is a nursing home? This scenario is very common, which is why in 1978, 45 years ago, Bennington Project Independence was established to provide a safe and caring place for adults who are facing the challenges of aging and disability, and for their families and caregivers who need support and respite. For those like myself who have been in this situation, we are blessed to have Bennington Project Independence here to help us. From the moment the van picks up our loved one in the morning until they arrive home later in the day, we know that they are safe and happy, actively engaged in fun and meaningful activities, meeting new friends, and doing things that enhance their quality of life. From the number, for the number of members with dementia to the number of members with physical disabilities, each is treated with great care and dignity by our incredible and loving staff. I'm going to read you two testimonials. This is what one family member has said about BPI. "I wanted you all to know that you are lifesavers, or at least sanity-safers. What you all do on a daily basis allows those of us who are caregivers to take a breath and relax for a few hours. We can get things done or do nothing. What a gift." Another caregiver says, "I can't thank you enough for all the kindness and help you have given my brother at BPI. The community he has found has helped him immensely. He is no longer isolated and lonely. Your understanding, compassion, and encouragement have made all the difference. Many, many thanks." As President of the Board of BPI, a former caregiver, and one who knows, maybe a future member, I want to thank the voters in Bennington for your support in the past and ask for your support again for the same amount this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next, I know Charlie Jingo's here for a $12,500 request for the Bennington Free Clinic. Charlie?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Charlie Jingo. I'm here to speak about the Bennington Free Clinic, which is also known as the Dr. G. Richard Dundas Free Clinic. I chair the Board of Greater Bennington Community Services, and the clinic is one of our programs. The clinic's been in operation now for 14 years. We opened in 2009. We're located over at 121 Depot Street in the G. Bix Building. The Free Clinic provides care. We serve people who don't have health insurance because they can't afford it, and we also serve some patients who are very underinsured, who have very high deductibles. We provide free primary medical care and care coordination, and we refer patients to specialists in the community. Last year, the clinic's doctors and nurses saw 198 individuals, and those individuals had almost 300 appointments. 98 were new patients, and about 2/3 of the people that have been seen at the clinic are from Bennington and North Bennington. We have an amazing team of volunteers. We've got 12 physicians, nine nurses, and one physician's assistant who provide the care. The clinic also does some other things. We help our patients get enrolled in one of Vermont health insurance programs, and in the last year, we had 265 consultations for folks to get signed up for one of the health insurance programs. Last year, we also started a new program, working with the Vermont Office of Refugee Resettlement and the Ethiopian Community Development Center over in Brattleboro. Our doctors did complete physicals and health assessments for 19 Afghani and Ukrainian refugees or asylum seekers. We screen everybody that we see for substance use and abuse, for depression, and for other mental health issues, and for smoking, and we do brief interventions and make referrals for treatment to other providers in the community. All female patients are screened for breast, cervical, and cardiovascular disease, and then we see if they're eligible for our Youth First Program, which is a women's health education and wellness program. All patients are also screened for dental issues, and we refer to local dentists for follow-up care. Our town allocation is used to help pay for and other outpatient services at the medical center here. It also helps pay for certain dental services and prescriptions that our patients need. And the town allocation is also used to help us pay for our medical and dental supplies and equipment. The clinic is a busy place, and we ask for residents to support us as you have in the past tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, for Article 12, we have a request from Sunrise Family Resource Center for $15,000. Is Denise Main or somebody else from Sunrise here?
Good evening, everybody. Denise is here as well. My name is Jonathan Cooper. I am the Chair of the Board of the Sunrise Family Resource Center. The hardest part about preparing for this is that I ask Denise for talking points, and she delivers them, page after page after page after page, and I have to decide which of these I will bring into this 182nd window, because there's thousands of points to discuss. It might be the over 4,000 children that received some services from Sunrise in the course of the past year, over 3,000 families in the same boat, or 3,700 adults. Sunrise has just 30 employees, but they are reaching all corners of our county and all corners of our community every single day. It's a powerful thing to see as a board member. It's something that I think, I'd like to think that the municipality, the town of Bennington and its voters have shown steadfast belief in over the years, as we've been able to count on, support from the voters year after year in ways that are truly meaningful to our staff of 30, who demonstrate a level of competency, care, concern, that wraparound support care services would provide or would demonstrate. I'd like to mention one program in particular that shows the kind of ingenuity of the staff and the opportunistic perspectives they bring, something called Families on the Move. Families on the Move was a really remarkable opportunity for the board members to engage in assisting staff in procuring vehicles by hook or by crook. Well, not crook, just hook. And it was an opportunity to provide some road-ready vehicles that have been refurbished and make them available to some of Sunrise's consumers and staff members, and I wish you could have seen this, spent so much time working with some of the families in at-risk situations to develop a budget, not just for having something, getting something, keeping something, making it road-ready, keeping it in good working order, and being fully prepared to bring this asset into their lives. Whether we're talking about community development or economic development, it's pretty exciting to see a program like Families on the Move at Sunrise deliver three game-changing wins in the context of wraparound support services, independence of increased mobility, ownership of a valuable asset, an expanded range of employment options in an area with substantial workforce needs. There's more that could be said, but I think that says it all, so we look forward, we hope, to another successful vote and the support of the town of Bennington in tomorrow's votes. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next, Article 13 is a $21,600 request for VNA and hospice of the Southwest region. And are you Sarah King?
I'm not. I'm here for Sarah King. I am Jessica Fredette, the Chief Human Resources Officer with the VNA and Hospice of the Southwest Region. So I want to continue, or I want to thank the Bennington community for their continued support for home health and hospice and the patients that we see here, just some high-level statistics of the work that we're doing in this community. In 2021, across all of our service areas, we saw 3,900 patients completing almost 120,000 visits. And in Bennington County alone, we saw 685 patients completing nearly 35,000 visits. One of our biggest challenges that we're facing is workforce, like many other industries and businesses in the area, and we have seen a significant reduction in workforce since the pandemic hit us in 2020, nearly a reduction of 24%. We've had to supplement staffing with travelers, and we lose about $160 per visit with every traveler utilized. In addition to that, we've seen significant reimbursement cuts from Medicare and Medicaid. Our employees are our number-one asset. We need to treat them as such so that we can make sure they're providing the best service possible to our patients and our community, so we continually reinvest in them. The majority of our patients, vast, vast majority, are Medicare and Medicaid patients, so we're severely underfunded in the work that we do. So the money that we receive from town appropriations is hugely important to help supplement those losses. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Last article before adjournment is a $25,000 request from the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless. Is Chloe Viner Collins here? There's Chloe.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Viner Collins. I'm the Executive Director for Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless, and I've been in my role about two years. We operate two shelters in Bennington County and the only homeless shelters in the entire county. Both of our shelters generally operate at full capacity with waiting lists, especially our adult shelter, our family shelter, and especially in winter months. So our adult shelter is on Main Street. It's that large blue house if you're headed toward Woodford. We were able to get a grant to scrape and paint it this year, so it's looking a little less dull than it did before. So we have 16 individuals there. It's a congregate setting, so bunk beds in four bedrooms. We also offer case managers there, pretty much 24/7, as we're staffed 24/7, to help clients with anything they might need, from job searches and interviews to help with cleaning and cooking even. We recently partnered with Goodwill to help clients have more classes and services and do resume building. We've also been working on other partnerships this year, including, we now have a visiting nurse from GBIX come to the shelter once a week to visit and meet with clients. We also have partnered with Turning Point to offer monthly potlucks at the shelter to make sure that we're connecting all of the residents to recovery resources and supports. In the last year, we transitioned our family shelter from Thatcher Street, which was located at 212 Pleasant Street, to Norton House, which is a project where BCCH partnered with Shires. Our new shelter also is nine family units and additionally has some staff offices, so you can all finally come visit me after two years. I have an office, which is very exciting. So both shelters are always full. We were able to fill the new shelter with much stricter guidelines in less than a month. The need is constant and ongoing and is increasing as we see inflation and the cost of living go up. I'm sure all of you know, but affordable apartments don't exist. I look every day for my clients, and yesterday I saw a new studio had been posted in Bennington, studio apartment for $2,000 a month. So for clients who are working at Walmart, it's pretty hard to swing. So I know there is a misconception in the community that frequently people are homeless because they don't work, and I'd like to let everyone know, a majority of people who stay at both of our shelters do work. However, they can't afford the increased prices or identify housing options. So the need is greater than ever. We really appreciate the ongoing support. We're only asking for a level of funding, so the same thing we've asked for every year, despite the increasing need. I would love to see the town support initiatives and efforts and use funding to prioritize another emergency shelter. Our partnership with Shires has made there be a lot more limitations on the clients that we can accept and the family size, which means that really the most vulnerable and in need people are now left without housing in the county. The over 200 people who were placed in motels no longer are going to be placed in motels as the program is ending this month. So the need continues to grow, and the Coalition for the Homeless continues to need support. We appreciate the Select Board and the town continuing to support us. We also offer drop-in services in addition to our two shelters, so that anyone in the community can come by 24/7 if they need a shower, or to do some laundry, or to just get warm and get a meal. This year alone, we served more than 200 individuals by providing them with emergency housing, and we couldn't do it without your support. So thank you all, and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the agency requests that are either in the budget or separate articles on tomorrow's budget. At this time, we've concluded our agenda. At adjournment, this meeting will stand adjourned until tomorrow morning at 7:00, at which point polls will open in Bennington here at this facility for voters on the Bennington checklist, except for those who live in North Bennington, and they will vote at the North Bennington Village Trustees Offices, which is in the North Bennington train station. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
No.
All those in favor?
No.
Okay. We stand adjourned until 7:00 tomorrow morning.